Good evening, everyone. The November 13th, 2012 Muskegon City Commission Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to invite Reverend Bill Freeman from Harvard Unitarian Universalist Congregation forward to lead us in prayer. And during our time of meditation or prayer, please keep in mind the family of our city clerk, Anne Cummings, whose father, Bill Gordon, passed away and was interned today. Following our meditation and prayer, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Freeman?
Let us lift our spirits. All that is holy, loving, sacred, and true, may we be grateful. May we be grateful for freedom, for the freedom to voice our concerns and to vote our conscience. May we be mindful that not all people have that freedom. And may we also be mindful of the men and women who have given us the right to voice our concerns and the right to vote our conscience by their sacrifices, and in some cases, their supreme sacrifices. May we be hopeful that one day, all people everywhere will have freedom. And may we be helpful in making that day come about soon. And may we also be mindful and grateful that people here tonight have the right to voice their concerns and to vote their conscience now and forevermore. Let it be, blessed be, so be it, and amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Wieringel?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Markowski?
Here.
Mayor Garwin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
And Commissioner German?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Item A is approval of minutes, city clerk. Summary request is to approve minutes of the October 23rd City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation is approval of the minutes. Item B is poverty exemption guidelines for board review finance. Summary request: Due to recent court decisions and policy changes by the State Tax Commission, the County Equalization Department has requested the city amend its board review poverty exemption guidelines. The resolution to adopt poverty exemption income guidelines and asset tests has been prepared to meet these new standards. Staff recommendation is approval of the poverty guideline resolution as requested by the County Equalization Department. Item C is SCADA computer upgrade proposal for water filtration plant, Public Works. Summary request: Authorized staff to enter into an agreement with Tetra Tech, 710, Ava Strive, Ann Arbor, Michigan for SCADA programming and the purchase of Dell computers for a total cost of $44,000. Staff recommendation: Authorized staff to enter into an agreement with Tetra Tech for SCADA programming and to purchase Dell replacement computer equipment for a total expense of $44,000. Item D is deficit elimination plan for home rehabilitation fund and state grants fund finance. Summary request: At June 30th, 2012, the City of Muskegon Home Rehabilitation Fund has a deficit balance of $182,501, and the State Grants Fund has a deficit unassigned balance of $8,781. Act 275 of Public Acts of 1980 requires that the city file a deficit elimination plan with the Michigan Department of Treasury. Staff is requesting adoption of the Home Rehabilitation Fund and State Grants Fund deficit elimination plan resolutions. Staff recommendation is to adopt, is adoption of the deficit elimination plan resolutions. Item E is the union contract agreement, service employees, international union, local 517M, clerical, city manager. Summary request is to approve an agreement with SCIU, local 517M, clerical, to extend their union contract for one year through December 31st, 2013, under the same terms, no salary increase and conditions. Staff recommendation is to approve the agreement to extend the union contract with SCIU, local 517M, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute it. And item F is the union contract agreement, service employees, international union, local 517M, unit 2, city manager. Summary request is to approve an agreement with SCIU, local 517M, unit 2, to extend their union contract for one year through December 31st, 2013, under the same terms, no salary increase and conditions. Staff recommendation is to approve the agreement to extend the union contract with SCIU, local 517M, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute it.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda. Are there any items you would like to have removed for further discussion? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Wieringel, seconded by Commissioner German, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Garwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings, please.
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Graphics House Planning and Economic Development. Summary request: Pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended, Graphics House Sports Promotions Incorporated has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The company will be investing $154,722 in real property and $111,437 in personal property. The investment is expected to create three jobs. This qualifies them for a tax abatement of six years on personal property and 12 years on real property. Staff recommendation is to approve the resolution granting industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of six years for personal property and 12 years for real property.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Francis.
Good evening. The company recently relocated to the city from the Heights earlier in the year. Back in May, we established an industrial development district so that they may apply for an IFT in the future because we knew an investment would be coming. So that's why we're here tonight. We have Brent McKinnon here from the company, and they've also met with Duana Thompson about their EEO plan.
Very good. Thank you. And the owner's last name?
Sorry.
McKinnon.
McKinnon?
I'm sorry.
That's fine. Thank you.
I probably forgot. Go ahead and say that over again.
We're all set. Mr. McKinnon?
Good evening. Good evening.
Is there any input you'd like to get, give, as far as your project and your coming to Muskegon?
Good night.
Okay, if you would come up to the podium, and if you give your name and address, just for the record, sir.
Brent McKinnon. Business address would be 444 Irwin Avenue, Muskegon. Graphics House is a family-owned company, been based in, actually, we started right down the road on NIM Street 20 years ago, in an industrial center. Moved to Muskegon Heights and have been operating in Muskegon Heights facilities, actually, three different facilities in Muskegon Heights, which has really impeded our growth. Basically, our company is very capital intense on the equipment side. We're a technology business, and we're constantly investing in the equipment. Over the last five years, we've had $1.2 million in investments in equipment. There was $300,000 prior to the $150,000 that's on the IFT. And we're looking at, you know, roughly a half million dollars of investments right now pursuing them. What we are doing is consolidating the two facilities that were in Muskegon Heights, move one leased facility from Norton Shores to the city of Muskegon, and one facility that was on Sherman Boulevard to this building. So we feel the new building will allow us to grow much larger than we've been able to in the past. The three jobs, I'm just kind of looking at the synopsis here that personnel put together. I think we fired six new people already this year.
Very good.
Any questions for me?
Any questions from the commissioners, from Mr. McKinnon, from Mr. Turnquist?
How many people do you currently employ?
Currently employed in this facility, the note I have here is 38, which seems awfully low.
Okay. And the new jobs, what type of jobs will they be? Will they be full-time, part-time?
All of our jobs are full-time. We tend to have a two-to-one ratio between office and administrative and production-type work. Most of our sales come outside of the state of Michigan. We're a national supplier of signs and graphics, not only to the sporting industry, but to other print shops and trades. So we feel this is, you know, it's great for us, is we count our blessings when we can hire a person. We've, a building of this size has been on our wish list for many, many years, but because the capital investment in the equipment is so high, in order to be sustainable, we need low-cost buildings and lots of equipment in them. So this facility worked out really good. It's a 110,000-square-foot facility. I had earlier meetings with some of you. It was a nonprofit facility prior to us taking ownership. So it's back on the tax rolls. There'll be apparently 38 new, 38 jobs coming to the city of Muskegon right now for city income tax. And then the, you know, the personal property tax is just huge with, huge with our business because we're constantly reinvesting.
And here, man, there's no way we can hear you. A whisper here covers.
Pardon me. Pardon me.
I apologize. Am I on?
I can't hear you.
Not on?
Not on.
Oh, there we go. So, you know, with the technology is, it's like a computer, is, you know, we get about five years' worth of use out of our technology before we have to reinvest. So we're retiring some technology right now, and that's why we're evaluating yet even, you know, larger purchases to bring into our facility. Each time with this technology, it's bigger and better, requires more people to operate, and of course, requires a lot more salespeople to sell that so that we can push those goods around the country.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner?
Regarding your recent and your employment to come, what type of background do those positions entail? Is that something that people can be trained on the job for, or that you have an expectation of experience?
Experience is always nice, and unfortunately, the economy that we're in right now is it makes it very easy for people not to even pursue work. One of our largest struggles is really finding appropriate people to employ. Our sales positions, we're in a position if there's some experience that we train. And most of our positions are trainable positions. Some of the technology, IT, design, marketing, probably 25% of the positions would really require experience.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this issue? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of six years for personal property and 12 years for real property for Graphics House. Mr. Please, Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of six years for personal property and 12 years for real property for Graphics House.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Commissioner Wieringel to close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of six years for personal property and 12 years for real property. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Garwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have new business, please?
Transmit of the June 30th, 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Finance. Summary request: The city's June 30th, 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, has previously been distributed to city commissioners by both email and hard copy. The CAFR is also available on the city's website. At this time, the CAFR is being formally transmitted to the committee in accordance with state law. The CAFR has been prepared in accordance with the AIOC founding standards. The CAFR also includes the single audit of federal grants received by the city. Staff recommendation is acceptance of the CAFR for the period ended June 30th, 2012.
Good evening, Mr. Paul.
Another fiscal year is behind us, and we have our independent auditors here. Eric Van Dossen will give a presentation, a brief presentation to you.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion.
Then let us do that.
I would move that we accept the CFR for the period that ended June 30th, 2012.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Spataro and seconded by Commissioner Hood to accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the period ended June 30th, 2012. Eric?
Hello. I'm just going to give a brief overview of some of the key points and answer any questions you might have, and be on our way then. So I think you guys see people have booked their statements handy up there. Why don't we just cover the front part briefly? As always, the front of the financial statements on pages 5 to 11 are an overview of the, that's the transmitted letter, that's an overview of the city, is written by Brian and Tim. Following that, on page 17, is the independent auditor's opinion letter, and that's really kind of the key part of the audit. Everything else in here is your information, your footnotes, numbers, statements, et cetera. We express an opinion on them here, and as noted in the third paragraph, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly no material respects the various financial statements, et cetera, et cetera, and in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. That's what we call an unqualified opinion, sometimes called a clean opinion. That is the highest opinion that we can give, and the opinion that the city has traditionally received. So that means everything is materially correct to the best of our knowledge from our procedures and testing. So why don't we just flip briefly through the general fund? If you want to go to page 36? Oh, I would also mention immediately following the independent, the opinion letters, that management discussion and analysis, that's a nice overview, kind of the short version of the financial statements. I'm not going to talk about that, but that is there if you want to take a look at it. Anyway, page 36 is the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. The general fund is in the left column. This is kind of the summarized version. There's a much longer, broken-out version of the general fund in the back if you wanted to look at the bigger version, but we're going to keep it summarized tonight. Total revenues, the first subtotal in the general fund, of $24,122,760. That is an increase of about $95,000. Just a few highlights in the revenue section. Under taxes, that includes both your income and property taxes. Income taxes are up about $813,000 from the prior year just due to higher collections, and that was offset by property taxes being down by about $453,000 due to declining taxable values. Intergovernmental revenue state there, you see about $3,592,000. That's mostly state revenue sharing. There's a couple other things in there, but the vast majority of that's revenue sharing, and that's down about $297,000 due to continued reductions in revenue sharing. The state's currently in the transitioning from the old statutory revenue sharing to the new EVIP system, and as a result of that, there were some additional reductions in there. Interest and rental income, $202,000. That's down about $113,000. I'm sure all of you are aware, there's not really too many places that you can put your money right now and get a decent rate of return, so the city obviously is dealing with that as well. And then the other line there, $540,000 other revenue, that's up about $109,000. A chunk of that's just due to additional reimbursements from the CDVG program for some of the activities the general fund is involved in. Expenditures, total expenditures of $23,34,402. That's a decrease of about $1,874,000. Couple areas to point out, under Public Works, $2,835,000. That's down about $244,000 due to savings from the streetlights. And then under other governmental functions, that is $770,910, and that's down a little over $1 million. As you might recall, last year, the city did a one-time additional payment into the MERS pension system. Being one-time, obviously, it didn't recur this year. And then debt service there, you see principal $70,000, interest to $211,000, $281,000 total. That's down $971,000, and the city had retired some debts early last year, paid a couple things off early. Again, those were one-time items. Capital outlay, $244,280. That is up about that same amount. There wasn't much capital outlay in the general fund last year, and that was some new accounting software, phone upgrades, those sort of things. So as I said, expenditures are down about $1.8 million, primarily accounted for with the drop on the one-time items that the board did in the prior year. That leaves you with an excess of revenues over expenditures of $1,088,358. Other financing sources and uses are not, money's primarily being transferred in and out to other funds, mostly being transferred out as the general fund transferred money to other funds, like the street funds primarily. That leaves an overall net change in fund balance of $508,663, and that leaves you with an ending fund balance of $6,520,45. And just to mention here, I think for internal purposes, you guys track the general fund and budget stabilization fund separately. We're required to show those together in the CAFR here, so $1.5 million of that is what you would consider to be your budget stabilization fund. So for internal purposes, you would look at the general fund and say there's about $5 million in the general fund. Any questions on the general fund?
Commissioners?
All right. Couple other things. Might as well, since we're sitting here on page 36, you can look next door at the Major Street Fund. Just the one item to note in there, at June 30, you guys had, down under the other financing sources section, had issued $2 million in bonds to be used on future street projects in as matches on federal and state grants. So that $2 million in debt issued appears there, and that accounts for the, almost the entire change in fund balance, is that $2 million will be spent in the year that you're in now. Including that $2 million, Major Streets has about $2.5 million in fund balance. And why don't we flip back to page 39 briefly and look at the enterprise funds? All right. The enterprise funds are the sewer, water, and marina funds. These funds are accounted for a little differently than the general fund and the street funds and most of the other funds the city has, in that they're treated, treated kind of like a business, they're full accrual funds and accounting jargon, which means the infrastructure and debt and related items are actually included in the funds instead of just the current costs. Sewer fund is in the left column there, just towards the bottom there, you can see change in net assets for the year. Sewer fund had an increase of $319,140. Ending net assets is $17,309,752. Again, as I was just mentioning, this is a full accrual fund, so that $17 million includes all of the pipe and the ground and other infrastructure involved with the sewer fund. The actual unrestricted portion of that $17 million is about $4.3 million, which is up from about $3.9 million last year. So the sewer fund is in the black a little bit this year. The water fund next to that had a decrease in net assets of $677,279, leaving ending net assets of $29,084,767. Again, that includes all the related infrastructure and debt. The unrestricted amount is about three, just a shade over $3 million, and that's down from about $3.6 million last year. This is a fund that's had a loss for a few years. I know you're aware of it, and had some readjustments after year-end, but keep an eye on the water fund. And the marina fund next to that decreased to $98,000. Ending net assets, $225,000, of which the unrestricted amount is about $250,000. So that is the enterprise funds. Any questions on those guys?
Commissioners?
Well, I'll have a question for our staff, I have, but not for the auditors.
Very good.
Okay. One last table I wanted to point out in here. If we want to go back to page 77, this, these are the, the schedule of funding progress for the, both your MERS system, pension system, and your other post-employment benefits. Just to kind of give you an idea where you are funding-wise, this, these tables show three years. We're going to obviously look at the most current year, and I would point out that these are calendar year, the actuary evaluation's done on a calendar year, so they're 12/31. So these are actually six months different than the financial statements. But looking at the MERS one on the top there at 12/31/11, you can see the funded ratio column is at 97%, down just a little bit from last year, but still basically very close to fully funded. MERS, the actuaries come up with the amount that the city is required to fund each year, and the city fully funded that amount. The funded ratio floats around a little bit. The actuaries have to make some assumptions about investment return and longevity and how long people live when they retire, and a bunch of other things, and they factor that into the required contributions. So those, your funded ratio tends to float around a little bit from one year to the next depending on how close the actuaries were to their assumptions. Below that is the, the other post-employment benefits plan, which you also hold through MERS. This one, you're only required to have a valuation done on every other year, so this is the first valuation you've had done in two years. As you can see in the 12/31/11 line there, your funded ratio increased from 55 to 76%. And that's, that's really good, actually. The pensions, the other post-employment benefit auditing standards took effect a few years ago. That required accounting for rotary healthcare in the same fashion that you account for your pension plan previous to that. Most entities were on a pay-as-you-go basis instead of pre-funding. The city's actually been pre-funding other post-employment benefits since, I believe, the late 80s, but now you're required to have these valuations done, and the city is funding the required contributions. Currently, that's not actually required that you do fund them, but the city has been doing so. And as you can see, the funded ratio is reflecting that as you get closer to fully funded, bumping that up to 76%. For both of these cities, in really good shape as far as funded ratios go. I'm sure you've seen national news stories even on a lot of the pension crisis, not just locally or even in Michigan, but nationwide. A lot of states and bigger entities have some big holes that they're having a difficult time filling because their funded ratios have gotten, gotten too low. So it's definitely feathering your cap that you've been able to keep up with that, and I guess they say you can see the results there. All right. Just to point out a couple other things, I'm not going to go through it in any great detail, but as always, and was mentioned in the motion that was put up, this also includes your single audit. A single audit is a, we just talked about was the regular audit on your financial statements. A single audit is a compliance audit for federal awards. Entities are required to have a single audit done if they spend in excess of $500,000 federal dollars, which the city does through a CDVG home and other programs. That is included in the back. Not really a whole lot to talk about there. The city didn't have any major new programs this year, just mostly the ones that you've had for many years. We just had one recommendation as part of the single audit, just a couple of adjustments we had to help with at the end of the year. Nothing major there, really nothing else really to note back there at all. And I think the only other thing I wanted to mention is you should have a little two-page letter. This is the auditor's letter to those charged with governance or to the city commission. Were required to provide this letter, certain things that were required to communicate to the board, and it's required to be in writing, and that's really what this letter is. There's really not a lot unusual or anything I want to bring to your attention. It's just required communications. There were no new accounting principles adopted this year. There were no disagreements with management on accounting principles, no unforeseen delays in completing the audit, various things like that. So just something required to pass out, nothing really to note in there, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And I guess before I wrap up, any final questions on anything I talked about or didn't talk about?
Any questions for Eric? Commissioner Turnquist?
I have one question. The overall report certainly seems very good, but we had a change, where is it? The fiscal year changed this year.
Yes.
And there's a footnote somewhere that this was a positive effect for this statement. Now, is there going to be an adverse effect for the fiscal year 2013? Are we going to?
Actually, the fiscal year change had a one-time positive effect the year you actually made the change. made the change, which I think was a couple, couple of years back now. Going forward, um, it doesn't, it doesn't have any effect on a year-to-year basis, so there's really, it, it was a one-time pickup, it was an, as a result of the economic change.
And there won't be a reversal, then?
No, the only way there'd be a reversal is if you changed back.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Vice Mayor?
Well, again, um, I think this is credit to our, our staff, the manager, um, the finance director, his staff, um, and quite frankly, I think this also shows the hard decisions that we have made have put us on such a solid financial footing. I am concerned, when we talk about the budget going forward, and when we have our, our goal setting or strategic planning session, however we want to phrase it, uh, this winter, um, the things that jump out to me is I'm particularly concerned about our depreciating assets in the water system and in the, um, marina and boat launch. Those are physical assets, I mean, we're not losing cash, but we have to be setting aside money, or eventually those, uh, those, we won't have the money to put in the necessary repairs and reconstructions to keep those things usable, and with the lower water levels, I think we need to be anticipating, uh, having to come up with some costs in the near future to keep those assets usable. Also, I'm very concerned about the debt at Edison Landing Harbor Thirty-One. Um, you know, we've got a, a good program there, I think that was a wise investment to make, but the fact is, is that we're almost ten years into that, and we don't have any real tax increments coming off of that property, and that's getting to be a bigger and bigger hit on the, on the budget, and we have to come up with some means of figuring out how to get that project moving forward, so that we can not be taking money out of the general fund to cover those bond payments. And then, of course, you know, our fiscal cliff, we've heard a lot of talk about fiscal cliffs, but our fiscal cliff, obviously, is consumers' energy, and just because we have a good audit and are in good, sound financial shape right now, I think we have to be very aware that in just a couple of years, we're looking at taking a fairly significant hit to our income. Um, I mean, when you look at how much our income tax is up, and yet our overall revenue was up very small amounts, that tells you the hit our property tax has taken over the last couple of years. So I, I just, I just want to throw that out there, I think we need to be aware of those things, I think we need to be prepared to discuss them as we go forward into the new year and discuss, uh, what the next budget's going to look like. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. You, you had mentioned, any other particular questions for specific staff, or would, or are you?
No, that was, that was it.
Okay.
I mean, that's, those are spring from the audit, but those are not questions for the audit.
Very good.
Those are questions for our staff.
Okay, thank you.
And for us to, to be thinking about.
Very good. Any other questions or input from the commission? Not? Thank you very much, Eric.
I'd certainly like to thank, um, finance staff as well, um, they put a lot of time and effort into this, and the financial statements, both the results and the, uh, the preparation of them and everything speak well to that, and we certainly appreciate the time that Tim and the staff put into getting ready for the audit and keeping the records clean during the year, and thanks to the board as well for having us out here again, and we'll see you next time.
You're good, thank you kindly. And again, thank you, Tim, and your staff, and all the involved, uh, staff that continue to work so diligently to keep our heads above water, and, uh, thank you for all your hard work. If there's nothing else, commissioners, I'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Murkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Garwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Before we go into any other business and into public participation, I just wanted to say, uh, something about a few items before, um, I received those comments from the commissioners. Uh, last week, Muskegon residents went to the polls and voted on four city ballot proposals. It's important that the city commission give serious consideration on how to address each one going forward, and I would like to offer some thoughts for the commissioners to consider. Uh, proposal one was the elimination of civil service, the proposal was handily defeated once again. It's clear that Muskegon, uh, residents do not want to eliminate the civil service anytime soon, and I don't believe that we should consider such a proposal in the near future. Uh, perhaps we can look at modification of civil service and look at ways that we could streamline or modernize it, uh, at some point down the road. Uh, proposal two and three were actually tied together. Number two was the proposal to authorize a millage increase up to point one mils for senior transportation, and it did pass, however. Number three was the proposal that would cap the city's millage at ten mils. This proposal had to pass in order for the approval of proposal two. Unfortunately, it did not pass. You'll remember that the senior transit program was slated for elimination as part of the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget. The program was continued through the end of this calendar year to give an opportunity for this vote. Due to the outcome of those two proposals, I believe we should move forward with discontinuing the program. On proposal four, the rezoning of the former Saperdy property was taken up. The residents voted in favor of that rezoning, however, the potential ramifications of whatever our next steps are on this matter need to be sorted out. Therefore, I'm directing city staff and legal counsel to provide the city commission with a memorandum outlining possible options, and we will begin discussing them at our work session in December, which would be the Monday, the tenth. And I'll take any other new bu- business or comments.
Just wanted, and thank you, Your Honor, I see where we, we have a copy of a letter here as well. Uh, I get more calls as Vice Mayor than I did as, as Commissioner of Board Three, so, uh, anyway, I've gotten some calls from the folks in Glen Side about, and, and I, I'm not sure there's a real understanding what the concern is, they understand trees will be taken out as part of the Wickham Prop, um, reconstruction. What they're concerned about is when the trees are removed, uh, because of oak wilt. Oak wilt, for those of you who may not know, is a disease that's endemic throughout North America. If you wound or prune or otherwise do major trimmings on an oak tree, uh, while it's active, basically from spring to fall, um, that makes that tree vulnerable to oak wilt, and it then can spread to other trees in the immediate area that may have lost a limb or so on. So their concern is, is that they would like the tree removal done while the trees are, um, dormant, which would be sometime this winter or very early spring, um, because they're worried about the other trees in the area that could be harmed if there's an outbreak of oak wilt in that particular neighborhood, since probably seventy or eighty percent of the trees are, are oak trees. So, uh, I know that they've requested that either Muhammad Al Shattaw or a member of his department come and talk to them at their neighborhood association meeting, um, hopefully somebody can be there to hear their concerns and help explain to them what the process is going to be for that street project. But that's their main concern, it's not so much that, oh, they're going to worry about this tree or that tree coming out, it's, they would like whatever trees are going to be removed, be removed in a way that minimizes the potential for the spread of that oak wilt. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
If I may just add to that, I was at that meeting when that was discussed, and I have been in discussion with Muhammad, and, uh, he has agreed to attend Glen Side meeting on the twenty-eighth of November.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Um, just a comment, um, I participated recently in, um, a program that's offered by the city, um, known as Citizens Police Academy, um, and I would like to, can you not hear me? Do you need me to speak a lot? Okay. Um, I recently attended a program offered by the city called the Citizens Police Academy, um, and Chief Lewis is here and his department runs that program, goes for ten weeks, um, it's provided free to citizens that put in an application, um, and provide their information. Um, and it's a very well-run program, and I really encourage anybody that's here today, um, who's a resident of the city of Muskegon to attend it. Um, it went over ten weeks, and we discussed just about everything that our city does in the way of public safety, um, how things are processed, the best ways to contact nine one one, how to help your fellow citizens out when there is a crisis, and how our responders respond to emergencies. So I really would recommend that anyone here go through that class, um, at the end of that class, I was offered and participated in a ride-along with city police staff, and I really enjoyed that, because it really gave me an opportunity to see the city from the side of a police officer. Um, I think that's something that some of our citizens could really use, so I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else from the commission? We'll move on to public comment. Larry Page? Larry, you'll be speaking on behalf of organizations tonight, I believe?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And if I could have you, uh, take the podium and give your-
I think I'll take ten minutes.
Okay. If we could just get your name and address, okay?
Yes, sir. My name is Larry Page, and I live at thirty-three, twenty-eight Wilcox Avenue, Muskegon, and I am here this evening to strongly and unequivocally advocate to you members of the city commission for the ratification of ballot proposal four, which was passed on November sixth, two thousand and twelve. The wording of this proposal is as follows, leaving out the long legal description of the property. Shall the zoning map of the city of Muskegon, Michigan be amended to rezone the following described property from General Industrial, I two, to Waterfront Marine, than the property is described. This wording is clear, it's succinct, and it's very understandable. This proposal was passed on November sixth by a margin of six hundred, six thousand, nine hundred and one, four, to five thousand, one hundred and thirty against, which is a fifty-seven point four majority. It was passed in all fourteen precincts of the city, including all four of the city It was passed despite an overwhelming climate of no votes, which defeated six state measures, one county measures, and two other local measures proposed by city administration. Of all the measures proposed to the city of Muskegon voters, your constituents, only proposal four, the important rezoning issue, was adopted. This ballot proposal was instituted to correct the important task left undone by city administration and called for by the city's master plan, the city's master land use plan of nineteen ninety-seven. Let me read from this document very briefly. The plan also provides of, it refers to, uh, Esti Warren. The plan also provides a future use of the Esti Warren site should the facility, at some point in time, cease to exist. The plan recommends that future use of the site not be oriented to industrial development. Future development should occur in a manner con- in a manner consistent with the character of the surrounding areas, recognize and protect the integrity of the, of the Muskegon Lake, and be consistent with anticipated and desired lake shore development. It goes on to suggest that the site could be developed for multi-story, multi-family use with little visual impact on upland residential areas. The paper mill, now Sappy, permanently closed its operations on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nine. City administration failed to take the action necessary to change the zoning to permit other-than-industrial use, leaving the dangerous I-two industrial zoning in place. This measure is not an attack on the present owner. It doesn't matter who owns the property, the zoning must be changed. However, the voters are alarmed by the owner's business plan, which calls for an ongoing scrap metal processing and shipping facility on this site. City administration has made its case against the part, the passage of proposal four, asserting that it might lead to litigation by the present owner, or that it could disrupt the ongoing negotiations between the city administration and the present owner. All this is conjecture and was reject- and was rejected by the voters. Also, the claim by some that this vote was advisory-only is patently false. The intent of the proposal was not to be advisory-only. The intent was that it would carry the full force of the law and should be regarded by the city as such. Nothing in the wording of the proposal suggests that it is advisory-only. In closely, in closing, let me directly address the commission elected members. This meeting is not yet adjourned. I call upon this commission to support the vote of the majority of your constituents and here and now vote to ratify this proposal. Doing so will leave for you a legacy of protection of this valuable property and our beloved Muskegon Lake, which it borders. Not hearing a motion to, uh, rezone, I would respectfully ask that, uh, this, uh, uh, this be put on, uh, on the agenda in a very early, um, future meeting. This, um, uh, this matter has, has already been three years overdue since January, since August the twenty-sixth of two thousand and nine, and it's high time we did something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. As I pointed out earlier, we will be taking this up on our December tenth, uh, work session, uh, having directed, uh, staff and legal counsel to prepare a memorandum for us to begin working with that. Thank you. Ms. Ann Fish?
This microphone's a little bit high. I'm built pretty close to the ground.
Hi, Ms. Fish, if I could just have your full name and your address, please?
My name is Ann Fish, and I live at twelve thirteen Westdale Avenue in Muskegon, four nine four four one. I'm here to speak for myself and hundreds of other people who will be damaged by the ending of senior transit. I'm eighty-four, almost eighty-four years old, and I have macular degeneration, I'm legally blind, I'm, uh, pretty deaf, as you, and I got off to a great start by forgetting to turn off my phone, my cellphone. That wasn't nice of me. I forget things, and, uh, uh, the go-bus is not an option for me, because they just pick you up and drop you off. I am most, I also have a disintegrating spine, which, uh, makes things hard, and I have had twenty-seven needles- And I have had 27 needles in my eyes to help save what vision I have left. And when they do both eyes, the whole world is a blur, and the senior transit drivers come in and actually take me out to the car after I've had the procedure and take me right into my house, unlock the door, and get me safely into my house because I can't see the doorknob even. And there are hundreds of others who are like me. And also, I'm not allowed to lift over 10 pounds because I've had two heart attacks. And when they take me to get groceries, they load them up and they bring them into my home. And it is a wonderful service, and I am very upset that it's going to be stopped because all of my kids live out of town. I live alone, except for five rescue animals. And I need senior transit, and I know that there are hundreds of other people in town who are unable to use the go-bus because you just get picked up and dropped off. And I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Fish. Ms. Fish, if you can hold on for a little bit, forget about calling a taxi. We'll, I'll take care of you at the end of the meeting. Said, don't bother calling a taxi. If you can hold on for a few minutes, I'll take care of you after the meeting, okay?
Bless your hearts.
We're all in the same neighborhood, okay?
Thank you so much.
You betcha. All righty. Ms. Pat Hausman?
I live at 661 Evanston Avenue. Well, I'm back, but this time I brought neighbors. If everybody from Angel School District, if you guys could just stand so that they can see who you are. And this groundwater contamination thing doesn't just affect me, it affects all of them, plus probably 150 more folks. My statement today is, when are you going to give us an answer why it's taken so long to notify us of the contamination? When you know people were using their wells to water their grass gardens and taking a drink on a hot day from their hose? There are residents in just about every block who have or have had cancer or lost a loved one from cancer or other diseases. I have a neighbor, Clifford Rendell, who wanted to be mentioned today because he wanted everyone to know how mad he is. Clifford is being treated for liver disease that could turn into cancer. Doctors told him that these toxic chemicals could be a contributing factor to his illness. When is the city, the MDEQ, and Burgess Norton going to take accountability for your actions or lack of action? It appears that Burgess Norton thought they could get away with just paying for a cleanup cost. The MDEQ never fined them or reported it to the EPA, and the city of Muskegon, you guys sat back and did nothing. It's just not our properties, it's our lives too. You need to give us some answers. Thank you.
We received the information from Burgess Norton at the same time that the potentially affected property owners did about a year ago. And they're working with the DEQ and will continue to do so. And as public, we need to hold the DEQ to those high standards. The city, as much as the citizens, are reliant on that super-agency being the DEQ in the state of Michigan. So continue to communicate with them, and let's all make sure they're doing, you know, the job that they're charged with.
I have an additional comment regarding that.
Commissioner?
I did speak with a couple of citizens regarding the situation after the last meeting, and I have made some contacts regarding the situation. I would like to coordinate with the Angel neighborhood for your next neighborhood meeting. I've contacted Vicki at the Public Health Department for the county of Muskegon, and she would like to meet with citizens and be able to discuss their specific concerns so that we can sort out what residents may or may not be utilizing wells for inappropriate purposes so that we can protect them from those uses, as well as discuss what hazards we might try to avoid and how we can work on the problem in the future. So I'm going to continue to coordinate that. I ask any residents who are willing to go to that meeting to stay afterwards or to leave their name so that we can make sure that we get with you and work on this moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Nye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Roger Nye. I live at 1495 Westwood Circle in Norton Shores. I also am a member of Occupy Muskegon. In observing the proceedings of this elected body, we have over time discerned an ongoing pattern of what seems to be indifference to the common good and a desire to frustrate democracy. It's not just your snow removal policy which puts children and seniors into the middle of the street where they risk being run over and killed. My friend, Morning Bear, a woman with a long record of service to this community, mentioned this at a previous meeting, and her good advice was flagrantly disregarded. It's also the three other principal issues that have drawn so many of us here tonight. The first of these other issues is the ballot chicanery, which has derailed the senior transit program. The people's will appears pretty clear. They voted for senior transit, and you know it. You should make this right the sooner the better. Second issue is the groundwater contamination with TCE and other chemicals in the Angel neighborhood, and the city government's role in apparently participating in collusion with Burgess Norton Corporation and the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality in covering it up, thereby endangering the health and lives of hundreds of people who have come into contact with toxic, cancer-causing chemicals through their daily activities. The impact on residential real estate values in this part of town is sure to reverberate for years, and we don't know how many people have died or will die of cancer as a result of this betrayal. The third issue is that of rezoning the former Sappy property. The people have spoken at the ballot box loudly and clearly in every precinct of this city. They have made the 100-year decision you were afraid to make. They don't want this city's lake shore marred by toxic waste dumps and scrap yards. Please figure that into your upcoming deliberations on this topic. You will have a moral duty to rezone this property or to resign your office. Thank you.
This thing's off, isn't it?
It's on.
It's on.
It was on.
Yes, it's on. I hope it's okay. I'm from 49445. I mean, the sign said Occupy Muskegon, you know, so I mean, here I am. Anyway, I've been in Occupy Muskegon for a year. Occupy Muskegon's been around for a year now, and I've been in it. And in that time, I've noticed, actually, steady crowds of citizens gathering to make their will known to you, that, for instance, that they want that Sappy, former Sappy property site rezoned, you know? And incidentally, citizens, you'll remember, at least in the textbooks when I went to school, they said that the people were the ones who ultimately had the power in a democracy. You might want to think about that one. Anyway, in all this time, here we are still, and you would think that you might learn a couple or three things from this. One is that it doesn't look like we're going to go away anytime soon. And number two is that we've probably learned a few things in this time, like, for instance, the history of what's been going on, like with, for instance, Every Woman's Place and the way you rezoned that out from under them, and what has happened and what works and what doesn't work, and who can help us. These are the things that we've been learning. Now, you're looking at a vitalized, engaged voting population here, reinvigorated. Anyway, you don't need me to remind you that, as Larry Page said, heavy voter turnout in the face of this. All precincts voted to rezone that property to waterfront marine. And you don't need me to remind you that this has been in the face of steady propagandizing from MLive, AKA Advanced Publications, and you don't need me to remind you that there was a long list of other proposals that all went to the negative. In the face of all of this, the voters resoundingly voiced their directive to you to rezone that property. Now, we, the people, expect, you know, that you would react appropriately and respond appropriately. Actually, the truth is, when I'm getting together with people, and I know a lot of people, what people really actually expect is that you'll continue, in the face of this, your foot-dragging, double-talking, outright lies. You know, the people that I meet, and I'm not making this up, they say things like, is it because they're really that slothful, or are they really that stupid, or are they really sold out? So that's the SOSOS, I guess, you know? I'm not making this up. Anyway, in the face of this, in the face of this resolve from the people, if you do continue this foot-dragging and stonewalling and that sort of thing, double-talking, saying one thing and doing another, I wouldn't be concerned that there's going to be litigation that's going to cost the city a lot of money. I wouldn't be concerned that there's going to be a recall election for every one of you that's going to cost the city a lot of money. I'd be concerned for you that there will be torches and pitchforks and your cars burning in the parking lot.
Excuse me?
I don't know. I'll pass for that.
Well, that really helps the credibility. Are there any other members of the public that would like to vilify? David?
It's a hard act to follow.
If we could just have your name and address, sir?
I'm Dave Hawkins. I live at 1450 Lake Shore Drive. I have copies of something. I'd love to hand on. I'm here because of the Sappy property. And I know the Sappy, Sappy thing kind of has tentacles that go all over, you know, property tax and city income tax, and now we've got a railroad problem. That old track that used to service Sappy is now a storage yard for old, unused railroad And there are 39 of them that were delivered the other day. So this track that's unused, that I was going to complain about and try to get removed because it's not maintained and hasn't been maintained and doesn't meet the standards that the railroad sets, is now a storage yard for unused cars. There are, were 39 old hopper cars that were delivered down onto that railroad bed, that unmaintained railroad bed that used to service Sappy. So I don't know if an unused railroad bed actually belongs to the railroad. The city staff seems to think it does. I've done some research. It appears that the bed may be part of some ancient granting of rights to use for railroad purposes. But I'm not sure that storing old railroad cars is really railroad purposes. I know if I had an old car in my driveway, you'd come after me. So, anyway, so I'd ask that the city take a look at this, and I'd like to get that, you know, if we rezone the Sappy property, one of the things that probably ought to go away is that railroad bed because we may not need it. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
I do have some response to that because it had been brought to our attention, and contact has been made with Mid-Michigan Railroad, and the contact person at that point said that they are storing cars for the time being, and you're right, there are 39 cars. They weren't specific as to the longevity of the storage. We were thinking that, the impression we were getting, that it wasn't a permanent thing. We will be doing additional research to see what our authority is when it comes to telling what the railroad can or cannot do with their property. A lot of that comes under federal rules. That's why it takes a long to get a railroad crossing paved after we do a job. And in the long run, maybe we'll be able to appeal to the railroad and hopefully touch their heart.
They don't belong on the lake shore. I mean, all the money we spent trying to clean up the lake shore, and now we've got old railroad cars. It just brings tears to your eyes, you know?
And I agree, you know, in my own experience, when I moved there in 1985, they often would park the cars, or the railroad cars down there from time to time, but it's been such a long period.
Well, if 30% of the railroad cars in the U.S. are idled, chances are, temporary, might be longer than I have yet to live.
I hope not.
Railroads go a long way, you know?
I've grown accustomed to your face, and you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
But we will continue to make inquiries and get the scoop on it, okay, Dave? Are there any other members of the public that would like to, Mr. Larson? Could I give you a hand?
Sitting so long, my foot went asleep. I had no inten, oh, Bill Larson, 1555 Randolph. I had no intention to speak, but I will now. I talked to Mr. Page the other day, and he, they had a meeting last night. We wanted to talk with one voice, and a voice that was clear to work with the city to try and establish what we want to establish. And you've said you're going to have a work session. I respect that. I'm sure many of us will be here. You know, I apologize that somebody would come up and denigrate the city commission that I served eight years on, and I apologize for his behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Can I add a quick comment before she speaks?
Before you speak, could the commissioner make a quick comment?
I have a quick comment following the gentleman, if you don't mind, real quick. There have been several comments regarding the city, and I just wanted to remind people that we are not the city, we are your city, and we certainly are here because we were either elected or we were accepted for a short period of time. And so I just want to throw that back out to people that under no circumstances should we be considered the city. We are certainly your city, and it is up to the people here to determine how it is run. So, thank you.
Hi, I was wondering if there's...
Name and address, please.
Morning Bear, 529 Houston. Don't throw anything in my car window. My, I want to know if there's any way that all of you could get engaged and involved on trying to have some fundraisers from the people who did vote yes to save the senior transit. I'd put money in a bucket. I know a lot of people in this city, if there was an organized group collecting the money, we would donate to save the senior transit. So, you know, it would have to be the city that does this because the money needs to come to you. So why won't you maybe get together and figure out a way that we can donate money, and let's save the senior transit? There are too many seniors that depend on it. There's not enough volunteers to get them where they need to be, and I'd much rather give you guys 100 bucks than sit and worry about what's going to happen with our seniors. We have to find a way to save this. We have to find a way to save this. I don't care what the budget says. If that many people voted yes, that many people are going to give you money. So would you consider that?
See what options we have. We had earlier challenged a number of proponents that, from the five months that we had the budget deliberations, that if they had any good ideas as far as funding, to please develop those and bring them up even prior to the vote, but we hadn't heard from anyone.
Well, I was busy. I didn't know that. No, I'm serious.
No, no.
If we had some buckets in the banks, because you know they're safe in the bank, if people knew what they were really donating to, we might be able to come up with it. You know, if there was really a planned, organized place to drop off the money, I don't mean grocery stores or Quick Stop, but actual banks. And it would be up to you guys to organize that, because the money's coming to you. So please.
See me after the meeting.
Get some buckets. Thank you.
Thank you, Morning Bear.
I would like to add something.
Ms. Fish, yes, could I have you go back to the podium? We... You know what? Forget it. Speak from where you're at, ma'am.
I can get back there.
If you wish. I was giving you some leeway.
I can see the big stuff. It's the little stuff that gets in the way. I was a teacher of speech, language, and hearing impaired all over Muskegon. And when the kids didn't have clothes, I sewed clothes for them. They didn't have snow suits, I made them for them. If they needed boots, I bought them for them. I know there are hundreds of other elderly people who have done wonderful things in this city. And the senior transit seems a small thing to pay us back for what we've done. I have had three do-it-yourself children, two adopted, hard-to-place children, one drug, fetal drug, the other fetal alcohol, and nine foster children who were either burned, beaten, or broken when they were brought to me to heal them so they could go to permanent homes. And I know there are so many older people who have done good things that I'd like to see senior transit kept for the sake of what we have done that's made, helped to make this city a better place for all of you to live. Thank you.
Yes, David Nye, 1495 Westwood Circle, Norton Shores. Once again, my friend Dan Mills has put his foot in a little bit, so I do have to apologize for that. He's harmless. At the same time, his concerns are extremely genuine. And his assessment of the popular mood towards this city commission is pretty spot-on, as far as I can tell. What I have to say is, the people have demonstrated that if you people fail to do your jobs, if you people ignore the will of the people, what needs to get done will get done. Senior transit will be saved by donations, putting your board to shame. The rezoning of this piece of property, the SAPI property, will, if not enacted by your board, end up in litigation. That is a promise. And finally, the legal situation you have put yourselves in by your failure to address the issue of groundwater contamination with Burgess Norton is something that is entirely out of our hands, but I will say that we will do our best to publicize the truth and make it known. Now, we should not be needing to do all of these things. If our city government functioned effectively, none of this would be necessary. However, we have demonstrated that we will step up to the plate when it becomes a matter of necessity. And I want all of you to realize the situation and to start thinking about ways in which you can proactively address issues such as this, so that we do not have to. Thank you very much.
Mr. Veltcamp.
I didn't expect to say anything either.
Well, feel free.
I'm kind of excited. Paul Veltcamp, 592 West Muskegon, last house on the right. I've been listening. My background is environmental design. That's the human and the environment. That's not weeds, seeds, flowers, bushes, okay? Forget about that. People are speaking out, they're voting, they want something. Here's what I see. I see we started with timber 130 years ago, and now we're demolishing the last element of what's done with timber, paper. It's like 130-year story, and now it's done. The SAPI paper mill is coming down. The last connection we have to timber is gone, right? We still have foundries, because we still have sand. I'm a little disappointed that some of the leadership groups in this community have not said, gee, everything has to be made. Everything in Muskegon can be made. A vast number of things can be made. Why aren't we assembling the energies of the noble worker to make more things? Okay? So I'm disappointed in the lack of collecting the energies and the noble work ethic of the people in this community that can make anything you need. They can weld it, bend it, stamp it, twist it, heat treat it, shoot it to the bone and back. There's miraculous people here, right? I've been impressed with the demonstrative energies of those who don't forget our veterans. Again, the flags all over the causeway. I've never seen that in my life until I came to Muskegon. I mean, there's really an attitude. I love attitudes like this. But back to SAPI. We started cutting down the timber, which some people would today call environmental rape. But now we're to a point where the mill that used the wood to produce the paper is gone. So we've gone from the first page of a book to the last page of a book. And I don't want to say, let's turn the page. I don't want to say, let's write a new chapter. I want to say, let's write a new book. Now, here's what's standing in the way. You guys are not a failure. There is a vision out there that I'm willing to begin working on to articulate as an environmental designer. And it involves people in a process, a long process. Let's call it a five-year process, where many of us stumble into a little bit of understanding at a time. We move forward with a little more agreement each week or each day, but we put our thoughts out five years, and we say, what do we want on the SAPI property? First of all, we want to call it something else, okay? Because we're closing the book. We have to invent a new Muskegon. We need information, education, inspiration, commitment, enthusiasm, and belief. We need belief in you folks. You're not a failure. Here's the problem. There's been a consistent problem. I've seen this going on for 10 years. Very big, strong expositions of energy from many, many people, millions of dollars, and it doesn't seem like we've got what we really need to have said we've reinvented ourselves. We have new buildings, we have new streets. But Muskegon still doesn't have a story. And we don't really seem to have any narrative about where we're going. We've got an energy center. We've got a water resource institute. We've got a, we've got a urban design challenge downtown. But mostly, thanks, Steve, this is my last sentence. Mostly, we have a vast dimension and gulf, socially speaking, between people in this Muskegon. Some of it's the presence of money, absence of money. Some of it's the presence of status, the absence of status. But there's a big gulf, a social disconnection between many people in this town. And if we can bring that together, and we can start to discover and learn and work, what is the vision of an energy center, a downtown urban challenge, a water resource institute? What is there, one in the world?
For fresh ones.
Is this a long sentence?
It is, but it is.
A lake that goes up to Horton Lake, 100 ecosystems as you go around that. And I'm really describing a small university called an environmental awareness park, because there are hundreds of subjects that are pertinent and should be expanded and proclaimed to the United States of America, not just the community. We've got subject matter that the nation needs. Water is important. Energy is important. Urban design is important, because that has to include everybody. That was a long sentence.
It was.
Was that all one sentence?
I think so.
Thank you very much.
I noted some commas, though. Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the commission, sir?
Hello, my name's Dave Kurtz, and my address is 3640 Fulton in Muskegon. I've been elected to speak simply because I am a senior transit driver. But I, every day that I go to work, I see the effervescence and the difficulties people have getting around. And it's very unfortunate, and I think, from my standpoint, $70,000 is a small investment to make on people who have given so much. The other thing I would ask you to look at, again, and it was evident on the ballot, Proposal Two did pass, but if you look at Proposal Three and the votes that went against it, the spread is huge. So it's apparent to me that even though some think it was clearly understood, it was not clearly understood. And I thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Bennerick, 3302 Arlington Avenue in Muskegon. Go Big Reds. And I'd just like to say, quote Martin Luther King, who said, "It's always the right time to do the right thing." And I hope you will honor the citizens of Muskegon and their vote to rezone, but also to provide the senior transit, because I think, I'm sorry that Bill left, Bill Larson, because I was talking to him about, actually, the planning and the zoning. But I said, well, what is Proposal Three? Because I understood Proposal Two and voted for extending the transit, which I think people felt strongly about, you know, and that's why it passed. But then Three, he didn't explain it to me that way. He explained it as like an operational village, like, you know, lights and everything else. And he didn't say, well, you have to do Three to get Two. So I don't think it was clear to him even, who's on the city planning commission. It wasn't clear to me, and it wasn't clear to other people I've spoken with. I think the will of the people is to maintain the senior transit, to honor our seniors who have done so much, and also to rezone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I believe, did I see one other? Yes, please.
Hello, excuse me. Hello, my name is Dylan Hock. I live at 2019 Harrison Avenue. There's a, geez, there's a number of things that have come up tonight, so I'll try to be quick. I want to echo Larry Page's sentiments. To a large degree, this has nothing to do with melting. This is between the people and the city, the people trying to right a mistake we feel that has passed by, that we would like to see corrected. And I understand that many of the commissioners, a good handful of you, were not even on the board when this decision was originally made, and that you're now in the hot seat, and I appreciate you taking that heat. But I would also like to suggest that there's no reason you should. And there is every reason to accept the will of the people, to make a motion and to vote on behalf of this. You know, there is talk, you know? I know you may not care for my friend Daniel's style, but that does not negate his message. And believe me, we are out in the community. We are the community. We hear talk. People are not happy. We do not feel that we are being listened to. We've been coming here for a year, and still the city all suggested people vote against this. The Chronicle, which I've also had the same conversation with, told people to vote against it. And I said, you're living in a bottle. The people are screaming for the last year that this has got to change. Now, if you don't listen, people are going to get upset. And these things are going to happen, you know, until you start listening. And people don't know if it's because you don't know the direction to go yourselves. And if that's the case, there's nothing to fear, because all you have to do is listen to the people. These are not your decisions. They're ours. We've made it. All you have to do is carry it out. That's your role. Solving the problems of Muskegon is not solely on your shoulders. It's on everybody's. And we come and we tell you, and we give you ideas. For instance, the senior transit, my friend Roger and I certainly did come in and offer an idea for funding that many months ago, that I guess has been forgotten, but that did occur. And so I just wanted to say, if you're looking for solutions as how this tango can end, all you have to do is listen to the people, carry out our wishes regardless, even if there's a lawsuit. If the people say, go for it, you've got nothing to lose. Who's going to vote you out for your next election when you're doing what they've asked you to do, even if it causes the city a lawsuit? Because from the way I see it right now, you're getting a lawsuit either way, either from the people or from melting. And I don't know who you'd rather stick up for, but I know who I'd vote for. So, thank you.
Shanti Davi, 4380 Hackley Point Lane, Norton Shore, Michigan. Well, I'm sure it's hard to take what you've been taking for the past hour. And, but you know, this is what democracy looks like. This is a saying of Occupy. We have been here a year. We've been asking you. We've been trying to engage the community. There is a different paradigm now, not just here, in many cities and towns across the U.S. that are struggling to make the right decision for the future because they've been abandoned by manufacturing, they don't have the money to carry on. The important thing about the cities that are thriving out of these things is that they, they listen to the people, they don't, they listen to their heart, they make decisions based on what is the best for the community, based on love. That's what is winning and working in the towns that are struggling and suffering. If you don't believe me, just Google stuff like that and watch YouTube videos, because there's a lot of towns that are struggling, and the ones that are working are coming together. They're using the brilliance of their community members. And we, we in Muskegon do have a lot of brilliant and creative people. We alone have come and brought you many solutions along the way in this last year. We alone have come and brought you many solutions along the way in this last year. Now, if you do not listen to the will of the people, this is a dictatorship, and that's what they tried to do with the PA for. We rejected that. We don't want that. Mr. Spataro likes to use the word democracy often. This is what democracy looks like. We have voted, it's clear. Do the right thing, and the solutions will come down the road. That's the way life works. Now, the senior transit thing, I mean, were you not almost crying? I was crying. We cannot let this go, and it's something, I don't know who made up this way that they had it on the ballot, but it certainly should have been clearer. And these things, things like this, is what makes conspiracy theories happen because we look at it and we go, well, they didn't want to do it, and here's how they got out of it. You know, I don't know if that's the case, but...and we want to give you the benefit of the doubt. We want you to do...we want you to do what's right. Now, I feel like I can speak about the Sappy thing because that's our lake. It's not just Muskegon, City of Muskegon's lake, it's the whole county's lake, and we don't want it to be polluted anymore. So, I don't know. I hope you do the right thing, you know? I hope you follow your heart, and I hope your heart is filled with love. Oh, and don't bring up that damn civil service thing again. How many times do you have to make us vote on it? I'm going to tell you why. They don't trust what you're going to do with it. So, start giving them a reason to trust you, and stop relying on city staff. They're not giving you good advice.
Remember, anything that comes up like that is a decision of the commission after we've talked with city staff, but the ultimate is our decision based on our heart or our gut reaction, or what we think is in the best interest of the city. And sometimes what's in, what we figure is in the best interest of the city is seen as somebody taking a hit, and somebody inevitably does. And I know it's cold, and I know that it's sterile, but many of you were here during the budget discussions, and damn it, if the reality of that doesn't hit home, then you're living in a fairyland because everything relies on whether or not we have the resources to carry on the base functions of this city. And we went through two or more nights of discussion in the summertime, and it wasn't easy, and it wasn't nice, and we've done it again when it came to privatizing particular functions of this city government so that we can continue providing particular services, and that hurts because it actually affects people that we know and work with. But there isn't an individual up here that doesn't give a damn about this city regardless of how many give-a-damn organizational meetings are being held down the block. Because, my friends, we're not from Mars, and I've said it before, we actually live down the street from Dave. You live down the street from some of these folks here in the same neighborhood. You do too, Sue. Commissioner Hood, you live next to some of these people in the potentially affected neighborhoods on the east end. Willie, you live right adjacent to the downtown. You give a damn, don't you? Commissioner Murkowski, you live over on the east end. You give a damn, don't you? We go home to these neighborhoods day in and day out. We talk to our friends, we talk to our neighbors, we take things under consideration, and yeah, so many of you may know what you consider to be better, but just sometimes, just sometimes because the world isn't simple, we have more information, and we have to be considerate of all parties that are involved, whether it be the electorate or considering the rights of a property owner under law. So, we're going to go through these things diligently, and we'll bite our tongues when we're accused of being on the take or being somebody's patsy and are being demeaned because it ain't the case, folks. Because at the end of the day, when I'm out of office, I don't pack up my bags and move across the corporate line to another municipality or a gated community. I stay here, I stay involved in my neighborhood association, I stay engaged with the friends that I've made at the administration level, at city hall, who do a darn good job of getting out to the neighborhood associations and to people's doors and attempting their best to discharge the duties that they are charged with, and we pay them for. Thank you, commissioners, for being good friends, good neighbors, and going back to your neighborhoods in this city and doing your damnedest because you do give a damn. Commissioner Hood?
There's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it.[1724.54]